And I just want to ask the board to, when looking at the budget, I know there are tough decisions to be made, but in the light of the situation we find ourselves in with COVID right now and the pandemic and the harms caused our small businesses, my request is that the budget line item for tourism, that we not lose any dollars from there. Those dollars are going to be very important to our small businesses going forward after this pandemic. And we intend to put those dollars to good use to support every small business in Rat Panic and try and get them all back up on their feet. Ultimately, that results in dollars, tax dollars to the county. So we would request that you keep that amount the same. So thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate it. Thank you for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
We have Paige's iPhone is unmuted.
Okay. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Paige Blaney, Jackson District. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
You're all set.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding the 2021 budget. The proposed budget still includes a raise in the county attorney's salary. Mr. Goff requested this. His county attorney's salary being raised 22%, and he wants litigation removed from his county attorney duties. During the project budget process, it was revealed the treasurer and the commissioner were not getting timely legal advice from Mr. Goff as the county attorney. Additionally, there have been occasions when even the board did not get timely legal advice from Mr. Goff. Mr. Goff did not even attend this month's regular BOS meeting. Mr. Goff does not have a contract that specifies his duties, the board's expectations, and his performance standards. Just a resolution making him the county attorney. He is not held accountable for his performance. To date, this board refused to remove that raise from the budget. Note, Mr. Goff is the only county attorney slated to get a raise in the 2021 budget. Bottom line, our golf has provided bad legal advice costing the county a significant amount of money. He is not performing his duties. He wants his duties decreased, and he wants a significant raise. Mr. Goff's total compensation, including Commonwealth attorney, is $190,215 plus $60,118 benefits. That makes him the highest compensated employee, and he doesn't even work a full week. As a matter of fact, when you add in the county attorney and you subtract what comes from the state, there's over $140,000 of compensation that he gets, which includes benefits. Still, the county portion is more than any other employee. Meanwhile, the citizens that pay that compensation are losing their jobs. I find it disturbing that Mr. Goff's requested raise even made it this far through the budget process. It is well past time for a new county attorney. And no, Mr. Parrish, the judge did not prohibit the board from hiring a new county attorney. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blaney. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, we have John Mills, school board member. I've unmuted your mic.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mills.
No, it didn't. Hold on. Maybe.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, a little light.
Hey, can you let Shannon go first, please?
Of course.
Thanks.
And Shannon is next in line. I'll unmute Shannon Grimsley. Your line should be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Grimsley. You're all set.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you all so very much for your service in this important and critical time. I really do appreciate it and managing these competing priorities with such care as you have. And Mr. Curry, I really appreciate your expertise in all of this as well as we navigate these new waters together. I did want to bring a little bit of clarity to the governor's unalotted funds for the school system. The amount that was unalotted for the school system is $72,000, and it is part of the compensation supplement. Our Virginia preschool initiative funding is safe, and so is the infrastructure and operations funding, which is a great benefit as well. However, I do want to point out that in our budget that we did construct, we were able to reduce the county transfer to us by $95,000. And we were prepared to make some additional adjustments as well to accommodate the $75,000 that the Board of Supervisors had called for in this proposal. However, with the unalotted funds, I do agree with Mr. Curry's assessment that we treat unalotted funds as though they were not going to be there. So we are considering that at loss as well. So we're coming in looking for another $150,000 already if this budget is passed this way. Just a food for thought there. I do want to take this moment also to advocate and recognize and acknowledge the incredible work the school staff has done in the midst of this crisis. I just could not be more proud of my colleagues in the field. We've served over 1,000 meals every week since the closures began. We were one of the first school systems that were able to meet that need. We were able to give out over 400 devices last week to students in need who needed devices and continue a continuity of instruction learning plan. Teachers are working extremely hard and contacting every single one of their families. So they, part of the board's priorities and my own, is to acknowledge that as well. And even though some of these funds have been unalotted, the goal of the General Assembly, the State Department, and the governor is still to increase salaries at 4% over the course of two years. Granted, that has a lot of variables in play right now, but if the goal is still there and that mandate comes through later, when right now we have firmer inputs that we do understand a little better, we have a better shot at getting toward that mandate. Whereas later on, when the waters could be a lot rougher and we have other increases to deal with, we may have quite a bit of issue getting there. Finally, I would like to say too that we have saved the county over $1 million in the past four years in health insurance costs with our Commit to Be Fit program and our focus on staff and staff wellness. Health and wellness is very important. We are very proud of that program. We continually look at the sustainability and long-term employer contribution rates. We have consulted with Pierce Group benefits right now in a study for sustainability for incentivizing higher deductible plans and hopefully incorporating an HSA with those. So that will be coming. So we're looking at everything as well. But overall, we're pleased with this budget, and we are very sensitive to the fact that everybody, you know, really does need to take a close look at everything. And we are here to support the community the best we can, and we will do our part as well. I just wanted everybody to understand those numbers as well. And thank you again for your service in this difficult time.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. I guess that takes us back to Mr. Mills.
Yes. I'm muting Mr. Mills.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You're all set.
Great. Thanks for not forgetting.
Thank you.
I do, I do want to offer my thanks to the board supervisors and Mr. Curry for the work that you're doing. I realize it's complex. The school is ready to make adjustments based on the COVID response that we know is facing you. We are hopeful that additional cuts in the 2021 school budget will not be needed. The shutdown has had a great impact on revenues, and it's also an impact on our students as well. Next school year is going to have its own difficulties for them, and our system will need to do its very best to recover for their sakes. So tonight, my request is that you please preserve whatever you have, and you have our promise that we will do our absolute best with what we're given. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
We have Beth's iPad unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Beth, you should be live now.
Yes, this is John Capielli.
Hi, John.
My, my question is in regards to the hotel tax. Will there actually be any hotel tax as the county has asked all of the hotels, B&Bs, Airbnbs, all of that category, and all of the restaurants to actually be closed other than hotel? And some have exceeded that and closed completely due to safety because of the COVID-18.
Mr. Capielli, could you remind me, I believe you live in Hampton District, but I wanted to note that as well, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, I do. I'm sorry. I'm in Hampton with Mr. Whitson.
Very good. Thank you so much. I just wanted to note that for the record, too.
All right.
Mr. Curry, do we have any other hands raised?
No other hands raised at this time.
All right. We're in the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, please do use the Zoom platform where the three dots are up in the upper right-hand corner, and it says more. There's an option to raise your hand if you'd like to say something. You may use that option and be identified by the county administrator and participate that way. So this is your, this is your chance to participate if you'd like to say something.
I have no.
I don't see.
No hands showing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. And with that, I would declare this public hearing closed. That takes us on to the CY 2020 tax rate public hearing. Mr. Curry, if you could introduce that for us, please?
Yes. The Code of Virginia requires the board supervisors to hold a public hearing for the budget and also for the tax rates if there's any contemplation to increase the tax rate. The advertisement that was in the paper indicated a tax rate increase potential of 2 cents on the fire levy. However, the budget is currently balanced with no tax rate increase needed. Nonetheless, because it was advertised, this public hearing is required, and I have received no emails and no telephone calls in my office regarding this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I guess, I apologize. I probably shouldn't have gone around and seen if any of the board members had any comments in the last public hearing, but I was sort of thinking these two topics feed into each other. And unless any of the board members have an objection, I'd like us to come back for discussion at the end of this public hearing.
I'm not seeing any hands raised. Several of the board members are muted at this time.
Okay. If any board members have an objection, please raise your hand.
No, no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Curry. It sounds like we're all okay with that, and I appreciate, I appreciate us going about it this way. I think it, since they do feed into each other, it makes sense to have one discussion at the end. With that, I would declare this public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak? Again, the same rules apply that we just followed from the budget public hearing. Raise your hand, and you'll be identified by the county administrator, and then you'll be identified by me as well, the chair, and we can proceed to have public comment if we have the platform we have available. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
I'm showing no hands raised.
All right. Going once, going twice. And with that, I would declare this public hearing closed. All right. If you could bring all the board members back online then, Mr. Curry? Thank you.
All board members are muted.
Thank you very much. And I guess this would be a suitable time for general discussion for both these topics. And I generally put Mr. Frazier on the spot first, but I think I'll ask Mr. Parrish if you have anything to add on these topics.
No, other than the fact that I'm relatively lucky that the majority of our revenue is affected by pandemic because of its property tax. And also, I guess in a way, we're lucky to have a slow, a very low student population so that all the students can be contacted personally by the teachers. And that's kind of what we're sharing. So I really don't have any, anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
Just, I just want to follow up on Ms. Flockner's short presentation and ask Mr. Curry, I know that the budget line item for legal aid is just a little over $2,000. Is that, is that consistent with what we've spent prior to my position on the board on this type of community service?
Yes, Legal Aid Works has a population, I believe, population-based formula for all the localities that they represent, and the funding in the budget is as they requested.
Great. Thank you. And finally, since Mr. Capielli is one of my constituents, I just wanted to thank him for speaking up, and he does raise a good question, which poses my own concern. And I would only, only say to him that fortunately fiscal year begins in July, so our downward projections of meals and lodging tax and related sales tax revenue relate to those, relate to the quarters beginning in July, and hopefully we'll bring some businesses back online by then. But I appreciate, I appreciate his statement in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donovan?
Yes, thank you very much. I just first of all want to say for my first year looking at the budget, I have to thank Mr. Curry for all of the hours that he puts into this budget, working with his team. And Debbie Minnick was just wonderful going through the items that he thought I should really be focusing on, and I just appreciate that time. Dr. Grimsley, the same available for give and take on information, just so I would be prepared as much as I can be. Because putting this budget is something I've never dealt with before. I am happy about the unalotted, governor's unalotted raises going into a contingency budget line. That makes very big sense, fiscal responsibility for us. And if he makes them allotted, we will be prepared to deal with that at that time. I wanted to thank the schools in general for dealing with the situation. This virus obviously is turning their world upside down, but the work that they're doing to feed the school students and the hotspots that we had to put in place, they did a lot of work on all of that, and I just want to thank them for continuing that. The comment by Ms. Jefferson is definitely one that I hear loud and clear from the broadband committee's standpoint. And I can say that having to put hotspots around this county, I think has put a spotlight on our need for connectivity throughout that's brighter than anyone that we've had on us in the past. And hopefully, there's some light at the end of the tunnel coming with potential work that Rat Panic Electric is doing, but that's too soon to tell. And I definitely am concerned about meals and lodging. It's not the biggest number in the world, but when you think of the friends and the citizens that have businesses in this county, that you don't know that they're going to make it through this. If we don't, if tourism wasn't at a good season in October, I expect we're going to see businesses closing. It's just too big of a month for anybody in the tourism business financially. And I do hope that we will continue to try and support our businesses as much as possible, even though the revenue isn't the largest number in our budget item. And finally, I think the Fire Services EMS are working hard to take care of us, and I really appreciate that they are happy, it seems, appears to be, with the budget the way it is. I think Mr. Curry did a great job. It's what we have to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Mr. Frazier?
Am I unmuted? It looks like I am.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have to agree with Mr. Whitson. I can't fathom the idea of voting for a tax increase. And I don't want to be pointing the fingers at my fellow board members, but I don't think that we should be saying that we're lucky that most of our revenue comes from real estate. We don't know that the taxpayers even going to be able to split their taxes. So, I mean, we have no idea what's going to happen between now and September 5th. It's all projections and hopes. And I think we need to realize that we need to tighten the belt. And with that, I'm back to the same problem that I've brought up at every one of our budget meetings so far, is the fact of that one employee that has a raise in this budget. And to say that, we got an email today talking about, you know, insurance and how it would, you know, protect the county, I guess, in any type of litigation. But if we don't have someone to litigate on our behalf, we cannot enforce our zoning ordinance. And I don't know why we've gotten this far into this budget with the financial situation the way it is, and we're talking about businesses that may not make it. And then we're talking about giving someone a raise, and obviously, we can't even talk about personnel performance because that should be in a closed meeting setting. And, I mean, it's just mind-boggling that we've gotten this far. We have to have someone that's going to do litigation on behalf of the county. Or we don't have a zoning ordinance. It's that simple. So I, I don't know. I think if we're going to, we're talking about tightening the belt, that needs to be everybody that's involved, or we may have to just, you know, look in another direction for, for county legal price. But that's, I mean, that's about all I have right now. I'm not in favor of tax increase, and I'm not in favor of, of the budget that was proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
And I would like to add to that, I feel. I think if we're going to go any further on this, I think the other members need to speak out and say why they're either for or against this one particular increase in that. For us, to just simply ignore it, and nobody says anything is, is just, it's irresponsible.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
I just have a few thoughts. And first of all, I want to just thank Mr. Mills and Dr. Grimsley for joining us this evening. I know this is a very challenging time for all of us as we move through the day-to-day operations with the pandemic and trying to look ahead. As we were discussing earlier, with unalotted funds, it is trying to hit a moving target and just project as best we can. And it's challenging, to say the least. And in spite of how challenging it is and how discouraging it may be, it is always heartening to know at the end of the day that you have such wonderful peers to work with on the school board and the school administration. And I just can't, and nice things about everyone over there. And I know regardless of how dark things they look, working together, we will come up with a good solution. And I thank for their participation this evening. I wanted to thank Teresa Wood for calling in for businesses of Rat Panic, and also for her continued leadership of that organization. As we've navigated this pandemic, she has been at the forefront, offering options to folks in really hard times, and also just navigating basic issues for businesses that they have to implement and taking a really handful approach. And I do very much appreciate everything that organization has done. I did want to mention in regards to the letter that Mr. Curry read into the record, Ms. Jefferson resides in my district, and I did not have any correspondence from her regarding the subject of connectivity equity, for lack of a better term. I did reach back to her to discuss this idea, and I have not heard from her at this point, but I certainly will continue to do so and report back should I hear anything. Mr. Curry, if you could refresh my memory, please. I don't remember, and I look, I didn't see that we have any funding for the broadband committee built into the budget this year. Is that correct?
No, I believe, and I'll double check right now, it's the same $5,000 built in as has been built in in the past couple of years. It's limited funding, although I think at your next meeting, you'll discuss the recent request for response from Rat Panic Electric Cooperative.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And I know we've done it the last few years, the $5,000, and it seems to be enough to do some studies and things that they have needed to have done. The broadband committee is in a formative place right now and a crossroads in their development. And I would expect that we will see increases possibly in their budget in the years, probably next year. But I think this year would be too early to allocate funds because the actions aren't clear that they need to take at this point. And we didn't receive a request for a budget increase from the broadband committee, so we wouldn't have allocated additional funds. And so those are my discussion.
Supervisor.
For the public hearing for the budget and the public hearing on the tax rate.
Supervisor Whitson has his hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Whitson?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Mr. Frazier, I appreciate everything you said, and you and I are in agreement fully on actually two fronts. One, neither one of us will support a tax increase, and for that I'm grateful to have his support. And second, I also will not support any pay increases for any county employees, particularly in the health crisis, in the midst of the health crisis world we are all enduring. But to answer Mr. Frazier's question, so everyone on the board is aware, why have I been silent regarding the request of pay increase for the county attorney? It's because this discussion we've been having over the last month on budget should be a budget discussion. And when a budget discussion is conflated with questions of personnel performance, it's difficult for me to engage in a rational discussion about a $10,000 line item in a $26 million budget and not believe that it's been conflated for a purpose. So with that, I want to be clear, I do not support, will not support any pay increase in this budget cycle because of the crisis we're in. And any question about any county, any county employee's performance should be dealt with separately and apart from budget discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Curry, that does remind me, when we walked through the PowerPoint from your presentation, I believe it indicated you didn't support I believe it indicated you didn't support or you don't think we will be supporting any increases on the county side. Is that correct?
What the presented budget shows right now is a 2% bonus for all employees based on the presumption at the time it was prepared that the state would be providing their share of that 2% bonus, which is now in question, and which is why it should be either set to contingency or removed and retired.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Do any of the other board members have anything to add?
Yes, I can add. I can, I still haven't figured out how to raise my hand here, but I could add something.
Yes, Mr. Parrish, your mic is live.
Okay. Now, in response to Mr. Frazier's inquiry about the silence on the county attorney, as I understand it, he's requesting a salary to go from $45,000 to $55,000. And so, in terms of replacing him, you know, I questioned if he would find an attorney to work for $55,000 and also, by the same token, have an office and a secretary in the health insurance at no extra cost to the county. And so, I just wanted to plug that in as part of the thought process. I said.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Mr. Frazier.
Does anyone else have anything additional to add?
Yes, Mr. Frazier is the same race.
Yes, Mr. Frazier?
Am I still on?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And in answer to Mr. Parrish's comment there, he and I are still on the board and going through the process of hiring a county attorney. And right now, we are paying way more money between Mr. Golf and backup attorneys when Mr. Golf can't make it or, and we also sometimes don't have anybody available when we have meetings. We're paying way more than the contractor that, right now, is serving Orange County and gave us an estimate. So, you know, it's not a very good argument. It's full of holes. We're paying more money now. That budget category of county attorney right now in our budget shows a proposal to go to $119,000. And we were told by the contractor that's currently serving Orange that he could do it for $60,000 to $70,000, depending on how often he had to be in the county. And right now, we see in this budget where the county, the two constitutional officers, the county treasurer and county commissioner revenue, had asked for funding so that they could get legal advice because Mr. Luke has been, I mean, Mr. Golf or we have not been available or they felt had conflicts. So, it's not an argument at all. But we only tell part of the story when we have these discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I would just say that, and I think I've said this the last two meetings that we've had, and I think Mr. Perry's aware of how I feel on this as well when he makes any adjustments going forward on the budget. I just feel like last year, we, as a board, reached a consensus, and I know this is a different board, but I still think it's a good, I still think it's a good idea. It was a good idea then, it's a good idea now. We paid for the vapor-tailing personnel study, and when we make adjustments, we should do it based on that study and we should do it across the board. I think that's the fair way that we decided to move forward, and I think it's the fair way we should move forward. And I think that's enough said on that topic. If anyone else has anything else to say, please do, let's have this discussion now so that staff will have some clarity as to how to move forward. All right. It sounds like no one had additional comments. Mr. Perry, could you walk us through the FY 2021 budget meeting schedule reminder, please? That's Agenda Item F.
Yes, I'll just pull this up quickly. We're here on April 20th for the public hearing. You have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. Again, it'll be electronic to discuss and shape the budget based on what we have learned since the board's budget was pulled together. You'll have your regular meeting on May 4th, and at that time, that can include a budget discussion item to further shape the budget. There's a budget workshop session on May 11th, already scheduled and noticed, and May 13th scheduled and noticed. May 15th is the date before which you must adopt the school board budget. The last two years, you've adopted both the county budget and the school board budget before that date. And then you can adopt the tax rates at the same time you adopt the budget. And discussions with the commissioner revenue and treasurer, they are okay with the board adopting the tax rates as early as you adopt the budget. That'll start the clock on when the land book needs to be prepared and presented to the treasurer and when the tax bills go out. The earlier the budget's adopted, the earlier tax bills go out, but the longer period will be available before the deadline for citizens to pay.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Perry. That takes us to the next agenda item, Budget Matters. The first item under Budget Matters is Item G1, Discussion Decision Regarding Health Insurance Plan Offering. I'm sorry to put you on the spot again, Mr. Perry.
That's okay. As I noted during the presentation, my proposed budget included a change in the cost share breakdown that the county provides and pays health insurance premiums for employees. Most employers do provide some portion of the health insurance premiums for their employees. Here in Ratahannock County, over the last several years that I'm aware of, the county has provided 100% of the employee-only health insurance premium. And then the only cost for employees was the point-of-service cost when they went to the doctor or filled a prescription with a copay. In fiscal year 2018, which is the year before, the budget year before I came on the scene, the Board of Supervisors provided the full payment for employee-only and then a $200 contribution towards dependent coverage for any dependents that an employee may have, whether it be a spouse, a child, or an entire family. In FY 2019, I came to the board and suggested that the board richen that program and provide additional funding for family coverage, providing $200, $300 for the first dependent that signs on, and then an additional $200 for family coverage, making the contribution from the county $500 plus that amount that was provided for employee-only coverage. And then last year, this current fiscal year, FY 20, the amount provided for dependent coverage, the 300 and 200, was increased, the amount to share evenly the increase from our health insurance provider. So, rather than being 300 and 200, it increased to, I believe, 312 and 520. The total cost increasing more than that. Reviewing those proposals and the program that was accepted by the board in those years as I was going into this budget cycle, the cost for employee-only and dependent coverage was escalating quickly and compounding annually at 4% or 5%, which, if you compound expenses that are quite high at 5%, they quickly get out of hand and become a major cost in the budget. At the same time doing that, I reflected on my original proposal in FY 2019 to provide $300 towards the first dependent and $200 for the subsequent dependents and thought that a more fair application would be to simply provide a fixed percentage of any dependent coverage. So, 100% of the employee cost for insurance and then a fixed percentage for dependent coverage. Our proposals from the local choice, which is a statewide pooled health insurance program available to local governments and schools, same program that our schools use, only they're larger and have their own risk pool, provide several options for health insurance programs or plans. And they range from very, very low deductible programs, including the Key Advantage Plan, which we had in 2018 and earlier, and then a Key Advantage, or that's expanded, Key Advantage 250. And the 250 means it's a $250 deductible for employee-only and it doubles for family coverage. And a KA 500, KA 1,000, and then there are even higher deductible plans available. One of the big changes that I suggested in 2019 was to separate the two plans that the county offers. A county our size is only eligible to offer two plans and therefore recommended that the board offer the KA 250, $250 deductible plan, as well as the KA 1,000, $1,000 deductible plan. And that provides significant choice for employees. They can choose a plan such as the KA 1,000 that has a low premium, but then a potential for high out-of-pocket costs. I'm going to open a memo here that has a table that maybe people can see that shows some of the costs for these premiums. And you can see from the KA 250 versus KA 1,000, these are the overall premiums that the county has to pay. And then there's a cost share between the county and the employee. You can see the escalation of costs over time from FY 2019 to FY 2021, we've offered these same plans. So, an employee could choose to have less out-of-pocket cost, and you can see here the breakdown in FY 21 proposed for the total employee/employer, whereas an employee could choose to have a $572 out-of-pocket cost versus $820. And those are very high dollar amounts on a monthly basis, and it just shows, when you look at the overall cost, just how expensive these plans are on a monthly basis and the amount that the county is providing on a monthly basis for these plans. So, going into '19 and '20, the Board of Supervisors provided 100% of the coverage for the KA 250 plan, and which you can see here, provided, meaning the employee had no out-of-pocket cost whatsoever for the KA 250 plan in '19 and '20. It's my goal this year to change the basis on how the Board of Supervisors calculates the portion of the overall plan that the board will pay for, to be based on the KA 1,000 plan rather than the KA 250 plan. The KA 1,000 plan has significantly lower premiums, and you can see $674 for employee alone versus $766. Knowing that this is a reduction in benefits for employees, 766 per month to 674 per month, at the same time doing this, I recommend to the board and in my proposed budget that the board provide the equivalent of that as a salary increase fixed to employees, not a percentage, but that $92 a month to employees in the paycheck. And then employees could use that to pay the higher premium for the KA 250, or they could put it in the bank and use it to pay for point-of-service if they think they are going to need it. Somebody who never had to go to the doctor all year long, but then end up with $1,100, somebody who had to go to the doctor a whole lot, may be well-served by selecting the lower deductible plan. In the mix with that, and has made it somewhat confusing, is that the, as I noted, in 2019 and 2020, the cost share for the employee plus one was $300 as escalated due to inflation, and then $200 for the family. And rather than doing that, in this proposed budget, it changed to being the total premium that it costs the county for employee plus one, which less the amount for the employee only derives the amount that is extra for that dependent. So, this proposal suggests that the county would pay half of that dependent coverage. And interestingly, when these numbers break down, you see that the difference between employee-only and adding one is $573. And then when you add a family, it's actually two times $573. It's equivalent on those two steps. And so, in the employer coverage, it'd be $674 plus half of the increase for employee plus one. And for, in family, it'd be $674 plus half of the $1,146. This served to right-size the contribution to employees so that every dependent is covered 50%. However, the inequity provided over the last two years leads to some, an increase for people who choose employee plus one, and then next to no increase for people who choose employee plus family. And that's because of how those plans were shared in the past. Now that they're all set at 50%, you can see that there are some increases, and they're shown out here and here of what that is. This table actually incorporates the extra $1,100 of pay for a full-time employee. I know there's been a lot of interest from employees. Many of them do not like this proposal. It's my goal to make the proportion paid by the county fair for the dependents that are just one extra in family. There are any number of solutions the board could choose to use to soften the blow. But for anybody who is insured by employee, by themselves, this proposal essentially has no impact on them. They would continue to have no cost of health insurance, whether they take the KA 250 or the KA 1,000. Anybody who uses the employee plus family, this plan essentially has no impact on them as it increases their premium $2. Where this really, or $5, where it really impacts people is that for employee plus one, because of the restructuring of 50%, those employees that had that could see a $55 a month increase if they choose KA 250 and a $49 increase over last year for a KA 1,000. I've spoken far too much, and hopefully you have a general idea of the complexity of this. As I noted, there are many different ways this can be done, and I can calculate it any number of ways. But we are under a clock to inform the insurer what plans we will offer during open enrollment and what that cost share will be. And so I do need direction from the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Can I ask, did you look at calculating how it was done last year? And what's the dollar difference there versus how it was calculated this year?
Last year provided $312, I believe, for the employee only and then $520 for employee plus family. And the way that those additional amounts over 300 and 500 were derived was based on the increase in total plan. So, if the board wanted to keep increases limited to what they would have already been, sharing half of the increase for dependent coverage with employees, we can do that. It would cost, I believe, more than this current plan provides. And if you wanted to do it in a way that had equity and the same sharing percentage for employee plus one and employee plus family, I believe I calculated that to be around $25,000 increase. I calculated that to be around $25,000 increase.
Okay. So if we were to approach this the way we did last year, it would cost an additional $25,000?
I need to go back and double-check that math, but it would be close to that, yes.
Very good. I did want to hear from the other board members on this. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it from the constitutional officers and employees. Mr. Frazier?
Oh, boy. I still don't have my arms around this thing yet. Even after all that, I don't want to ask them to go through that again, but I guess maybe I really need to sit down one-on-one with this thing. But it appears that I have the fundamentals of it, but I just don't know exactly how it's going to benefit the county employees as much as just, I guess, the overall budget.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I'm, this insurance in general is a crazy, complicated mess. I hate dealing with it personally, and I have to do it with the tavern. The plan we have is a very strong plan. It's very similar to what we do carry at the tavern, and because of it, there are a lot of my employees that can't afford it. So the fact that we have a plan that although it's not necessarily happy, the staff's not necessarily happy with it, the fact that they can afford it and get the benefits of this plan, I'm proud that we can do that. I did hear from multiple people that they are concerned, one with how they found out about the change, which I've discussed with Mr. Curry. It probably could have been a little bit better if we'd have had more time, and I think the virus probably took away part of that time, and I am sorry that we couldn't handle it a little bit more user-friendly. I think if we can figure out ways to add a little bit more of the budget to this, that would be appreciated by everybody I spoke to, although I think the $1,100 for the full-time employee, they'll do a lot of that if I'm understanding this correctly. The other part that I'm not sure we're good at, because I'm new to the county as a supervisor, is do we educate the staff on all of the benefits that come along with the plan that's a very strong plan, which telehealth these days, you can get online, and it costs you, in some cases, no deductible, and you get the same results. Yearly exams are typically free, so somebody that's healthy, the more expensive, or the less expensive higher deductible may be the best route to go. Using emergency rooms versus urgent care, there's definitely a different free or deduct, yeah, deductible when you go in. And then the pencil envision that I think Mr. Curry read me is part of this, is not part of this, I'm not sure. So it's a very strong health insurance plan, but I do understand even, you know, a month can make a difference for a lot of people right now.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Parrish?
Okay. This way this is set up, it still seems to be like a pretty good deal for everybody involved. And across the board, it seems to be probably more fair to everybody, because you take the employees that were using their spouse's insurance, they were, seemed to be like they were getting the short end of the stick, and this, in a way, takes care of that a little bit. And it's, it's, you know, there's no way that it's going to be 100% completely equal to everybody, but I think this approaches it about as good as we're going to be able to do. That's just the way I see it. And I have to, like Mr. Frazier, I don't understand every single aspect of it, but that seems to be my impression. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I would just add that I wish we could take a minute and look at what it would, and I know this isn't going to happen on the spot tonight, what it would cost to run this plan the way we structured it last year. I know there was a lot of support for the way we structured it last year. I felt like we made a commitment to people that that was the way we were going to approach it. And I think if it's possible to do it, that we should continue to do that. And if there's $25,000 we need to find to do that, then we should probably go back and see if we can't find it somewhere. I have a few ideas about where we could find it, and I'd be willing to go back and look if the board thought that was a good way to move this forward. I guess my question is, tonight, in the action I've been related to this, Mr. Curry, do we need to indicate how we're doing it, or just that we're going to use local choice again this year?
The local choice requires two things of us. And one, we told them a while ago that we didn't expect to change plans, the two plans that were offered, that they would be the same. But they also do request us to tell them the cost breakdown between employee and employer, because there is a minimum that you have to meet to use the local choice, although we far, far exceed that minimum. And this all stacks up to the date that we have to release open enrollment, which stacks up to being able to get the people's elected selections in time to have them coded in so that we start the next fiscal year with the correct elections for each employee. So it is all time sensitive.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. With all that being said, do I have any motions as it relates to this item on the agenda this evening?
Chair Smith, this is Kier Whitson, representing the Hampton District. Mr. Curry, could you be more specific about the time constraints we're under here?
The open enrollment period should be 30 days. So you walk back from July 1, in order to get things programmed into payroll system, you need to come back a week and a half at least, and you roll back 30 days from that, and you're in mid-June, and then the local choice wants to have things 30 days before that, and we just ran out of time. So middle of April is their preference for having this information. And of course, they'll take it when they get it, and hopefully it will work out for us.
Madam Chair, I mean, I really contingent on whether or not Mr. Curry can confirm it will cause a problem. From where I sit, I really, I really do need a sufficient opportunity to study this and determine what's best. And I wonder if we might be able to defer our final action until our May meeting or our next budget meeting.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, if Mr. Curry believes that we will still be in compliance with the insurance provider, I think that would be a better course of action, because, you know, we received additional explanation in memorandum, and that's no criticism. Mr. Curry's done a fantastic job, and obviously he's managed a very complex issue here, but to the extent it is complex, if I could have more time to make an educated, reasoned decision, I sure would appreciate it.
Well, and that, I was just going to say, that title says Christine Smith, largely with the way I feel about this agenda item. I feel like at this time, I think these are good plans. I feel it's appropriate that we can reach back to our provider and let them know that we are interested in pursuing these plans with them again for the coming year. I'm not sure, uncomfortable with the details on how we've laid out the plans this year, to include that information in our commitment. And so my question to you, Mr. Curry, is between now and our next meeting on the 27th, do you, do you think it would be possible, could you go back and look at how it would look if we structured this plan like we did last year?
So I, of course, and by that I assume you mean providing a health insurance, covering health insurance based on the KA 250 plan, not providing any salary increase, the $1,100 would go away, because it would be needed to pay for the KA 250 plan, and then setting up the dependent coverage based on the original $300 and $200, but escalated to cover half of the dependent cost. And yes, I can do that. I would like to bring the alternate recommendations that I think provide more flexibility to staff and provide the same dollar amounts for those who want to stay in KA 250.
Okay. I think, I mean, I don't want to keep the other board members, I certainly want everyone to speak, but I think the more cost-benefit analysis we can have on this, so that all of us, you know, that are on this board and all the people that are enrolled in the program right now, can know what our options are and take the best path forward, if we can make the commitment on the plans, but punt details for a week, I think that would be who of us all. Board members, how do you feel about this?
Total agreement here around Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Whitson?
Yeah. Well, I, is it, are we, are we still communicating something with the insurance provider? Is that what I understood you to just say, or maybe we need to say anything right now to them?
Well, we will communicate with them at least ranges and let them know our timetable, and they can tell us the consequences, and I'll report that.
Yeah, I guess on the consequence, I want to secure Whitson again. I just want to make that. Do we, can we sit here right now in this meeting and know that there would be no consequences to our, our time period?
I think the biggest consequence would be a shortened open enrollment period, and our employees would have to be agile and put pressure on staff, but they would have to be very responsive to get their information back to county administration. And if there are people who want to change plans, it's just more paperwork. So shorter time would be tough.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that. Okay, but I just want to make sure that from a premium perspective, that we wouldn't in any way incur penalties or...
I don't, I can't answer that definitively, but I would...
Or something like that. You're just saying that. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I think this is way too important to the staff, and we need to make sure we do our best to take care of them and take care of the fiscal responsibility. I did an open enrollment through online, Mr. Curry, this year. I don't know if that's an option.
I was, you know, we've looked into that. The schools is doing that. We have so few employees. The personal touch tends to help get things done and explain, I think, better.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah. I guess it makes sense to wait another week and make a decision at that point. If there's any more, newer information or more understanding about it, that's fine. Like I say, I hope this one seemed to be pretty fair to the most people, but we'll just move forward and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Curry, do you have, do you feel like you have clear way forward this time, or do you need us to vote on this?
No, I guess what you're asking for is for me to bring back additional options to the board next Monday to include structuring it exactly as we have it in FY 20 and sharing the increase for coverage on, with dependents, basically 50-50.
Yes, please. Thank you very much. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, item G2, insurance provider discussion, property liability, et cetera.
Yes, I placed this on the agenda, not knowing how far into the process I would be able to get for this meeting, and knowing that a decision wouldn't be made at this meeting, but beginning to prepare the board for a decision like we at your regular meeting on May 5, this is time-sensitive, is essential, that we, the board identify your property, automobile, liability, insurer. As board members are aware, we have the Virginia Risk Sharing Association now, which is formerly VMLIP, and two years ago, we sought a proposal from Bay Corp, which is really the only other competing entity out there, and at that time, didn't make sense to make any change. We tested the waters again this year with both providers, particularly because there have been some disagreements between the county and Versa on coverage. The county attorney drafted some specific language for non-monetary damage, public official liability claims such as FOIA and COIA, and provided it to Bay Corp to see if they would accept that language, and they did, and priced it. I now have several pricing options with various per occurrence and aggregate limits for that type of coverage, and I'll be able to compile that information and get out to the board this week, and have it available for you to review and digest at your meeting next Monday, and then hopefully have the board in a position to select and ensure at your May 4 meeting. I can tell you right now that the cost is essentially the same between insurers, and we believe, like 87 other counties in the state, believe Bay Corp may be, it may be time to change.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I guess I'm wondering, is there any possibility of any savings there, or is it, you seem to indicate that it's pretty consistent?
We really drilled into the coverages over the last two years and made sure they were right-sized for us, as far as our workers' comp coverage, to make sure our employees were classified correctly, as far as the line of duty act coverage, to make sure the right number of employee and volunteer fire and rescue providers were listed correctly. And we were able to trim the premium down two years ago and held it fairly steady. It went up a little bit last year. Both programs show an increase going into this coming year. It's within what I assumed in the proposed budget, which I just assumed a 5% increase over FY 20, and so we're within that window with either provider, but I don't see a significant cost savings.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do any of the board members have any questions about this agenda item?
Well, excuse me, I've got something in my throat here. Yeah, like I said, I got that email earlier, I saw today, and I just mentioned it briefly in the discussion earlier, to say that we won't have someone that will be doing litigation. The insurance companies don't litigate on our behalf. They may defend the board or the county on litigation. So if we don't have anybody that's willing to do litigation, we can't enforce our zoning orders. And I just thought I'd put that out there one more time, so that even I understand it properly. There will be litigation, and we don't have the zoning orders.
Yes, sir. And the few zoning cases that Ms. Summers sought summons for here recently, Mr. Goff actually brought those charges as the Commonwealth attorney.
I understand it, and that there, that is the problem in itself, because as Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Goff doesn't work for the board, and we have no input in that. And then, and then the problem with it is, those were basically decided between him and some sort of a plea agreement, and the county's guild is looking at the same zoning... And the county's guild is looking at the same zoning violations for four years now.
Yes, and so if the board can, we can litigate civil items, I believe, as you desire. It's my understanding for a county attorney to litigate criminal cases, the Commonwealth attorney must grant that authority. And you can do either way, criminal or civil with zoning matters.
But again, if the county doesn't have an attorney that will litigate on its behalf, then, then we don't have a zoning ordinance. We're not enforcing it.
There would be, it would be a cost to hire an attorney to litigate on our behalf in those circumstances.
Exactly, so we're right back to where we were discussing earlier, that there's hidden costs by saying that we're using the, and then expensive method. The inexpensive method that we supposedly are using is costing us more daily, and it was proposed to cost us even more.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue? Did you have anything to add?
Not really, I look forward to seeing the price breakdown and any other information Mr. Curry could give us.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
No, just wait for more information, thank you.
Mr. Whitson?
No, hold on. Let me have you, Mr. Whitson.
Thank you. I did have, I did have early in the year, a very long discussion with Mr. Goff about the two policies and have a fairly good understanding of the direction in which we should head. So I have no further comments at this time, I haven't studied it a bit already.
Thank you. I did wonder, Mr. Curry, this is Christine Smith. I did wonder, I know some insurance providers are providing refunds or credits because of non-use, because of COVID-19. Do any of our insurance providers indicate that they're offering that?
Yes, our insurer will be providing a refund and I believe it's, it's either 15 or 25% of our automobile policy. They asked us if they wanted it applied to next year's premium or a check, and we asked them to send a check.
Okay, very good. I know it's, it seems like zings and dimes, but anything we can save as this plays out, you know, may benefit us in other areas, and I appreciate your being on top of that. Does anyone have anything to add to this agenda item? Insurance Provider Discussion?
Well, just after Mr. Whitson made comment, he did. I don't know that every board member has the same understanding on this particular issue, the insurance and the coverage and, and what type of process that we should be using with our county attorney. But we haven't had, and as you remember, Ms. Smith, it was almost impossible for us to have any type of personnel discussions prior to the first of the year with the previous board. So I don't know that all of us have the same understanding of the process as Mr. Whitson has elaborated on. And I don't want to put him on the spot, but I just wonder what exactly we're talking about. Because I, I haven't had any discussions with the county attorney. It's almost impossible for me to have a discussion with them.
Mr. Whitson, was your comment in regards to how you understand, and I don't mean to put you on the spot either, I'm just trying to refresh my own memory, how you had discussion with the county attorney in terms of our litigation coverage? Is that what you all had to say?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, early, very early, late last year, as I made the rounds and trekked me with all constitutional officers, this question of litigation coverage came up in casual discussion with Mr. Goff. I mean, I, as a new board member, I certainly thought it important to take upon myself to meet with as many constitutional officers as possible. And so, part of my discussion with him related to litigation insurance coverage and what we were getting and who was providing it, and if it was sufficient. So in that sense, I got some background on the, on the competing service providers. And really, I mean, that's, that's really all, all I can tell you. I mean, I've got some background in notes, so...
And I guess, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I had asked questions before, Mr. Curry. I think you'll remember regarding our, our levels of coverage for federal cases, if that was adequate. Because I know in the past, before my time on this board, some cases were broad that sort of fell into a gap because they were federal cases. So any kind of information we could have in terms of insurance that that's covered as well would be very helpful.
Yes, I'll, I'll be sending out to you probably tomorrow the proposals from the two carriers and provides a general description of the different coverages.
Very good. Thank you. I think, I think we can resolve any other questions about this one-on-one discussions. Does anyone have any additions to the insurance provider discussion?
Not provided, we can get some additional information.
No, I obviously better know we've got that additional coverage as well. That takes us to the next agenda item, H1, the COVID-19 update. Mr. Curry, did you have any updates for us on this?
Nothing specifically. The, Mr. Williams did have a conference call with the chiefs tonight, just to brief. I'm not sure if he managed to make it on the call, surprise or Smith. Made it on the first, first half, but it was from 6:00 to 7:00. Continued to work with them. Mr. Williams is in touch with the health department. We still just have the one confirmed case. That doesn't mean that there isn't other presumptive or test, there are no other tested cases in our community, but there could be presumptive tests or cases or unknown cases, carrier cases. So everybody should continue to heed the governor's recommendations. That's my advice.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I just wanted to give an update to everyone. I was invited to participate on that OEMS call this evening. For whatever reason, I didn't have any luck joining that meeting. I did communicate with Mr. Williams to see if there were any actions that the board needed to undertake as a result of the meeting, or if there were any needs that were not being met at this time, that we should address as a board. And he reported that there was no action needed from the board at this time, nor were there any needs that were not being met that we needed to consider. So I apologize, I'm not sure why I wasn't able to join that meeting. But I was not able to log in on the phone and, but I did get a report prior to this meeting, and it seems like there's no action needed by this board. We do have tentatively scheduled a public safety committee meeting for next week, and may or may not move forward with that meeting if we are able to put together a quorum, or anticipate being able to put together a quorum.
So I have a question.
Mr. Parrish?
Oh, it's the, you know, the height of the miracle season right now. Experienced, I've been experiencing frustration with people not being able to get into the park to look for the mushrooms. But even if we opened up our trailheads, the park is still closed, right? They still not able to go up in the park? Does anybody know?
I would look for Mr. Curry to clarify, but my understanding is the park is closed to vehicular traffic. Is that right, Mr. Curry?
All access, it's closed.
Yeah, the park is closed right now completely, and I'm sure if even a citizen who, before it was just the trailheads were closed. And, of course, there are a lot of ways into the park not from a trailhead if you happen to live along the edge of the park. That's different now, the entire park is closed. So I wouldn't suggest that people should be on park property right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I mean, it is unfortunate that the park is closed. We did have reports of a lot more folks in the area to begin with the nicer weather. And I did reach back to Kevin Solskaya, who is the new superintendent for the Shenandoah National Park, or he's acting as superintendent for the Shenandoah National Park, and requested that they do some messaging on social media in advance for the weekends just to remind folks that the park is closed. And also, anything that they do, you know, in terms of a presence in the county, particularly on the weekends, that it would be very much appreciated. So he was very receptive to that and indicated that they would pick that up as well.
Okay.
Mr. Whitson, did you have anything to add?
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to thank you, Madam Chair. I know you were out with your husband putting up more signs, just reminding people coming into the county that there's no trail access here currently, and I want to thank Mr. Frazier, too. I thought his signs looked great, and if the wind would cooperate, I know they'll go up again. So that was hard labor, and you had, you had a lot of help, I know. But still, thank you for taking on that project. And I know when we, when we had the emergency meeting on that Monday, we thought, we thought that at least closing all trail and access in the lower park boundary within Rapid County would make a difference in terms of traffic in the county. Certainly, I observed in the last week or so, a significant decline, whether it's 80 or 90% of traffic, I don't know, but it, it seems to approach that. So I do feel good that we, we, in the community, we're all able to work together to find a practical and simple and virtually no-cost solution to protecting ourselves. So I want to, I thank all my colleagues on the board, Mr. Curry, and all the folks up in Shenandoah National Park. We did check with Flynn, he's now moved on to the greener pastures for their help in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
I just wanted to say thank you, Madam Chair, for reaching out to the park service when I got the messages on social media with regards to Chester Gap. It was clear that people were back hiking where they could and probably thinking their carton'd been, but it sounds like there were several up there on Sunday. So I appreciate you reaching out and copying me in on that. And hopefully, this weekend, they'll have a little bit of park service. I think he was talking about having rangers out, taking a look at those areas, which is great.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Oh, I, I don't have anything to add on that. It's just, as Mr. Whitson mentioned, the wind was very uncooperative for a while. I just have the banners back up every room.
Do you, do you have additional banners that are available for folks that need them for kind of hotspots as well?
I do, I think we have, and well, I say that, but I, he wanted me to put the one up there in Chester Gap and one in Flint Hills, so if I take those two out, I think I have one, three by fives left. But I have to check, I do have the two original, too. I have the, a four by eight to go up the Chester Gap or somewhere up in Wakefield, and then a three by five as well. So I think I only have two three by fives that aren't spoken for.
And I have, I have one of the smaller ones, and I have one additional large one that I'm hoping to get out this week. I do think it will be a ongoing situation for as long as this lasts, as long as the park is closed. As long as other as nice people will want to get out and get in, and I would, I would, too. So I'm hoping to get at least one other sign up this week and hopefully put us in a good position, so everyone knows what's going on. I did go back and make sure the cones were up in the parking areas up there at Mountain Pass and Buck Hollow yesterday, and those are still both very well marked. And there is actually like a VDOT, or the park has to put up a lighted sign as you start to climb to the top of the mountain, that announces that the park is closed. So they, there is messaging at the bottom of the mountain, you know, to give people a heads up as to what's going on. To sort of be on a completely different note, I do look forward to a day very soon where we can open up the county. I'm hopeful that we won't have a lot of cases to report, and I do hope that we as a county can start to undertake our regular business. I look to Richmond, and the governor is certainly moving his agenda forward, and there is essential business to do there. And we have essential business to do as a county, and I'm very concerned with momentum that we're losing on some of our committees, especially on the planning commission and on the brobbing committee. There is a lot of vitality and momentum as we started the year. And the sooner we can get back holding regular meetings and work sessions and doing the people's work, I think the better, and I hope it will be soon. Does anyone have any other questions regarding the COVID-19 update?
Yes, this is Gary. Just for any additional signs that go up or plan to go up in the VDOT right away, just let me know the location, so I can complete the land use permit for VDOT.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And I thank VDOT very much, they were wonderful in terms of getting cones and barrels and anything that we needed to help with those parking areas. The folks at VDOT and the sheriff's department and the folks at Shenandoah National Park, it was really great cooperation to get everything really clearly marked. And I just thank everybody involved. Mr. Whitson, did you start to say something?
Yeah, no, I'm going to be a beggar, be a chooser. I noticed when I was driving over the Amisville landfill area that VDOT has one of the message, electronic message boards there in the compound where that bridge maintenance area is, Mr. Frazier. I don't know if that's not being used, but as Ms. Smith said, as the weather gets better, this will be not going to be a problem, or we're going to still have traffic. I just wonder if it would be worth checking with VDOT to see if that sign might be available for our use somewhere on 211, just to reinforce the point that people can't access the park.
Yeah, that, that may change on a weekly basis as, as their projects are completed. Yeah, so it may be that we have to bug them on a regular basis so that we can pick one up as it becomes free, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I just think it, I think your signs are great, but I think to have a big one like that, that's flashy, it'll make them annoying. Mr. Curry, is that something you want one of us to reach out to, Mr. Nesbit, or do you want to do that?
I'm happy to reach out to him.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you. It's a good, good idea.
Very good. Okay, so that leads us through item H1 to the refuse update. Mr. Curry, would you like to lead us in this agenda item, please?
Yes, and of course, time is getting a little late. As everybody, board members and likely citizens who may be on are aware, we had a rather abrupt change to our service provider over the last weekend. So Updike has completed their work for the county, and we're now using Page County through the contract agreement that was approved by the board supervisors, Rapid Hanna County and Page County. So far, so good. We didn't have a lot of time to stand things up, and so there's a bit of improvisation, improvising in place. And our citizens have been asked to make a drastic change in how they recycle from a co-mingled solution with Updike recently to a source separated solution. Right now, we are borrowing all the refuse containers from Page County. We're leasing at a very low rate a few containers from Falkir County. We're very grateful for them. Our containers are on order, and when they come in, we'll have much better signage for the program. Compactor should be, order should be placed tomorrow. And so within eight weeks, six to eight weeks, we should be able to transition fully to our new setup, assuming site work can, can happen appropriately. So I know big changes, I'm working on messaging to the community in addition to the release that's attached to the agenda and having our... and having our, our partners in the press help us get the message out to the community on what can and can't be recycled, which containers they can be placed in. I don't want to get too far ahead of that before we have our own containers, because it will change a little bit. But there are a lot of lessons to be learned and habits to break, but we'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do any of the board members have any comments on this agenda item, the refuse update?
No, I, I think Mr. Curry's done a great job trying to keep all those balls in the air.
Ms. Donahue, did you have anything to add?
I just want to thank Mr. Curry. Know how crazy it had to have been to make all that happen so quickly, and luckily, people in other counties that are happy to, to help us, because it could have been a much worse mess than it was, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Oh, sorry, it's muted.
I think here's muted, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, please, and.
Mr. Curry, you're tired of hearing from me tonight. No, thank you. I just wanted, actually, I wanted to echo the sentiments of everyone else, and thank you, Mr. Curry, because I, I saw firsthand all the moving parts, and I quickly pulled everything together. And I also want to just express my early confidence in the customer service that we're getting from Page County. This weekend, Flatwood was full up by, by Saturday afternoon, and Jeff Blevins at, at the Battle Creek landfill was able to mobilize containers for us on short notice for Sunday, which then filled up very quickly again. But there was, the level of responsiveness is very much appreciated, and I expressed that too.
Yeah, and I can say that we were emptied out today.
That's fantastic.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
No further comment. I too appreciate all the work Mr. Curry's done. Looking forward to have these things moved out with it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I just want to echo everyone else's comments that, you know, it wasn't a abrupt transition. I think it is a successful transition as much as something like that can be. I know that business was brisk yesterday when I stopped by, and I'm glad to hear that everything was cleared out this morning. And I would just say anything we can do to get out information regarding particularly the recycling instruction, and, and clarify that. It's going to be difficult to reinforce, especially during this pandemic, and be maybe as hands-on as a transition like this that we might normally want to be. But in visiting the site, and I thought everything was clearly marked. It is a change, so it will take some time to get used to, but I think it's very clearly marked, and, and I think folks will be able to get used to it quickly. And it, it gives me assurance that all the recycling is being properly treated, when there's so much care to have it separated on the front end. I did see that there were some comments from people that they would like more instruction as to lids on, lids off, how clean, you know, some fundamental recycling 101 stuff. Just, just to make sure that message is clear. That's all I have. If there's no further discussion, that takes us to item H3, the purchase award for public safety of radio programming for transition to HERS system.
Yes, thank you. This is an item that normally I would just take care of without board interaction. We already have budget for the overall radio project and to transition to the HERS system. Part of that is to reprogram the Motorola radios that we have that are capable of operating on the HERS system. But because the cost is $10,575, $575, over the limit that the board must approve awards, I'm bringing it to you to approve this award. There aren't very many Motorola shops that can do this, and this is Radio Communications of Virginia, and they have a contract through VDOT that we've, we're able to leverage. They had some decent pricing, so we can continue moving on this HERS project. It would be very nice to have it also behind us, which should happen in June or July.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Frazier, did you have any questions or discussion on this item?
No, no, I don't.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
No, I'm, I think it just makes complete sense.
Mr. Whitson?
No, I'm, I'm good, I appreciate it.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board.
I'm on board too. Do, do I have a motion in relation to this agenda item H3, please?
This is Kira Whitson, Hampton District Representative. I'll make a motion that we approve the award of work to Radio Communications of Virginia to reprogram county fire and rescue radios, so that they will work on the new HERS radio system.
And sheriff radios. Did you get, there are sheriff radios as well.
Sorry, you broke up there.
I'm sorry, there are sheriff radios as well.
Okay, including sheriff radios.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our final agenda item, I want adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No, moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, that was Mr. Parrish, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, also, thank you.
Thank you.